Take approval of the agenda, Councilor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to make a motion to vary the agenda to move five point two to five point one. The reason, oh, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Seconder, Councilor Knoxanna, discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Kalka. The reason, the reason being is that the community futures, delegation is one hundred and twenty pages in our agenda, may take a little, take a little bit of time, whereas we have the Lions Club up first. And just in the, in the essence of saving them some time, I think it'd be appropriate to have them speak first. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor on the motion? Carrie, take approval of, approval of the amended agenda. Councilor Norbury?
That the April twenty second, twenty twenty five regular council meeting agenda be adopted as amended?
Seconder, Councilor Knoxanna, all in favor? Carrie, adoption of minutes for March thirty first, twenty twenty five special meeting of council minutes, recommendation, please, Councilor Knoxanna?
That the March thirty first, twenty twenty five special meeting of council minutes be adopted as presented.
Seconder, Councilor DeSau. Any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Call the question, all in favor? Carrie, April seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council minutes, Councilor DeSau?
That the April seventh, twenty twenty five regular meeting council minutes be adopted as presented?
Seconder, Councilor Norbury, any errors or omissions from council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Any business arising from the minute, or sorry, call the question, all in favor? Carrie, any business arising from the minutes, council? Staff?
No.
Thank you. Delegation is Lions Club of Tumblr Ridge, Bob Rhimes, president of the Lions Club of Tumblr Ridge, in attendance to present to council regarding the operations agreement of the Lions Flatbed Campground. Mr. Rhimes, please come on up to the delegation And Mr. Mark Dealey will be joining as well.
Thank you, councilors. All right. Just wanted to spend a little bit of time with you guys tonight. Some of you, probably all of you know the Lions Club exists, but I'm not sure that all of you guys know that, what exactly that we do. So I'm going to walk through that with you guys. And of course, this stems on the fact of the, the whole issue around how we pay the district based on the revenue that we generate. So I'm going to read from a little bit of a document I put together here. Lions Flatbed Creek Campground Operating Agreement, Lions Club of Tumblr Ridge and their volunteers has and will continue to serve the community. We serve, that's our motto. In twenty twenty four, club activities, we had twenty-three events supported. Some of them were freebies, like we give it away. Others were fundraisers that we used those, that money to help other people in the community. Donations from July twenty twenty four to March twenty twenty five, seventy-two thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. That's significant. That's the best year that we've had, to my knowledge. In twenty twenty four, we had a new membership drive. I believe we ended up with eight new members. This year, one of our members is working to initiate the LEOS program for tomorrow's Leaders of Today. So that's something that's, that's happening as we speak. We're just getting going. Our people also manage the arena concession, and we also have bingo every Monday night. So the Lions Club of Tumblr Ridge has been operating the Lions Flatbed Creek Campground since twenty, two thousand and eleven. Before that, the district had paid for a private contractor to manage the campground, and I believe Mayor Darrell can speak to that if he wishes. Since the Lions Club took over, has been serving the camping community from across B.C., Saskatchewan, Ontario, and Europe. Many improvements of the campground have been completed by the Lions, including the following list: a new playground for children, eighty-nine thousand dollars. District provided the equipment to install it, but the, the, the people we purchased from insisted that to maintain guarantee or warrant, or warranty on that, they had to install. Eighty-nine grand. Resurfacing campgrounds with gravel, twenty thousand dollars. We paid for siding on the equipment shed and the concrete floor, and my friend Frank tells me that we'd also put some new doors on what would used to be the storage building, and is now the, the campground attendants' office. In twenty twenty four, Lions spent thirty-two thousand to upgrade the storage building and converted it to the campground attendants' office. Also installed two windows. The first overlooking the playground so we could have a look at these kids as they climb on top of the roof of the unit. And a second window is to be used for ice cream concession, which one of our volunteers is looking to do this, this, this year. And it'll all be in accordance with FoodSafe, and of course, we have our guru with FoodSafe right here. Mr. Dealey graciously volunteers to, to train our people, and he has, and I, I believe pretty much all of our twenty-six members have went through FoodSafe. In twenty twenty five, plans are in place to spend a further forty-one thousand to remove rock and stump piles in the upper loop, install three more campsites for a total of forty-seven. A travel trailer will be located on site number twenty-seven for the campground attendant or his deserting at the site twenty-four seven. A septic tank line will be trenched to the septic tank and a water line trenched from the existing water line next to the woodshed. This is all with approval from the council. If we can go ahead and do that, we're willing to do that in the next week to two. The new operating agreement, which now runs from twenty twenty five, this year to twenty twenty seven, speaks to the operation, the operator, that's us, paying the district twenty percent of gross revenue, which is unacceptable to our membership. It's unacceptable. The statement needs to, needs to read that the operator shall pay the district twenty percent of net revenue after campground expenses at the end of the Lions fiscal year. It's always been, has always been twenty percent of net. And I would ask my predecessor, Frank Walsh, to speak to that. Frank, how have you always, how, how have you paid for, for the district in the past for the campground?
We started in twenty eleven, and the, the lease was at that time that we paid district twenty percent of the net for the year. And every, every lease after that, except for the last one, I don't know how in God's name that happened, was written in. We paid twenty percent.
Yeah. I stand to correct you, in that, you're referring to the last operating agreement, which, which, the old operating agreement read twenty percent of gross. We've never paid twenty percent of gross, never. Mark, any comments on this?
Yes.
I'm at that last, and that was the last lease, and I don't know how it got there.
Thank you, Frank.
If I could just speak to this, not to go on and on, but the fact of the matter is, the Lions is not a business. I came to Tumblr Ridge in two thousand and five, and everything I ever had, everything I ever saw done in the community involved the Lions. I had a young family, everything that involved the kids, the Lions were there. Everything that brought the community together, the Lions were there. Mayor Krakoa was my sponsor getting into the Lions. I've been a Lion for over ten years now, and it's one of the greatest joys of my life, next to teaching in my own family. We looked at paying the gross, the twenty percent gross, when we were asked this year. We can't afford it. So we looked at other options. We've got maybe leasing it from the town, and then paying back whatever, whatever the billing was for the services from the town, but we couldn't make that work financially. We are here to ask you to put it back to twenty percent net, not with the idea that it is a profit-making business for the town, but that it is a, a service that you provide the Lions, or help provide with the Lions, so the Lions can provide other services to the town. I look at the faces on the council, and I know that you know what the Lions do. I, as a teacher myself, I can tell you right now, although it does not enter my classroom, the Lions donated, I believe it was forty-six thousand dollars to the high school this year, to get a complete set of laptops. That is an incredible thing to give to the high school, especially in a time when we have such a need for technology, and we have a cutback on kids being able to use their phones in the classroom, they're not allowed to use them at all. I don't think you can spend more than a year or two in this community without being touched by the Lions in one way or another. They are an important part, and they can't be seen as a business. We can't be seen as something that needs to generate revenue. So we're asking you to go back to the way things were with twenty percent net, so that we can continue to serve the community the way we have for the last thirty years. Thank you.
Any questions?
All right. Thank you very much for coming in as a delegation. Appreciate the update and such. It's always great to hear from everybody, including the Lions Club. And I mean, I think both of you have mentioned it. I mean, the Lions have done so much for this community of Tumblr Ridge, whether it's cooking burgers on power outages, or giving to families in medical need, and, and such like that. So there's definitely no question of what the, the Lions do for the community of Tumblr Ridge. And, you know, whether that's me saying it up here as a mayor, but I mean, I know that from being on the street. You know, like, there's nothing ever negative to me when it comes to the Lions Club for Tumblr Ridge. It was always somebody you could look out to, reach out to. Like I said, Bauer's going to be out for more than a day, Lions are on the front steps cooking burgers. It's always been that way. I don't think that'll ever change. So again, appreciate coming in, appreciate the update. I know I've, I've talked with staff, and I was a little surprised that we're looking back at an operating agreement, because I was waiting for this lease to come forward, and, and understanding that maybe some of those numbers didn't work for the Lions. I don't have much questions when it comes to that yet, because I haven't seen it all. So for me to try to question on the, on the, on the lease, I never even got to see it, to see on some of that. I know one of the things that I've asked staff for is a breakdown on some of the things that, I don't know what it was it would have been, when in April. I think it was in October or November, staff had submitted a report in regards to nonprofits and what, what they'd given out and what their losses were at the Lions Flatbed Campground and some other groups within the community. We are still waiting for that information to come in, so I can see what that information was when we're throwing out that the Lions Club lost twenty-three thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, or something like that. It was eighteen thousand and twenty-three the next. We don't even know what that breakdown is. So I can't even say that, oh, like, you know, is that, was that GLD out wrong? I don't, I don't even know. We don't even know that. It's no different than, I believe, in, in twenty twenty-four, I think it was a loss of thirty-five thousand dollars to taxpayers for the flatbed campground. What that breakdown is, don't know yet. That information needs to come forward, council, so they can have a look at it. Is stuff being GLD out wrong? I'm not sure. I know I did reach out to the camp attendant, just to ask him, you know, obviously, he was down there lots through twenty twenty-four camping season. I know we go down and pick up from the sandy dumps, so do me, for the shower house, and then obviously the general use, any dump that's up top, anybody can dump a trailer there, whether you're at Guillam Lake, Moose Lake, Flatbed Camp, or Lions Flatbed Campground, or up in the Wolverine Valley. Anybody can dump there, it's on a private to the campground. So I'm not sure if that was GLD out to the Lions Club, because to me, that shouldn't be GLD out there. So there's some, you know, things that we need to get some information on too, as, as well. So I'm going to open up questions from council, and then we'll circle around that way. Councilor Norbury?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Kalka. Yeah, just some comments, you know, I'm just here to support, support you guys. You do a lot of good work in the community. I mean, everybody in the community knows who the Lions is. I don't think there's a single person in this town who hasn't enjoyed, you know, the, the hot dogs at all the events, you know, the, the Easter celebration over the weekend, thank you for that. And just the amount of support you give the community, and people being able to access funds without having to go through a administratively difficult process like other granting organizations. I think there's a lot to be said for organizations that are easy to access, to get funding for, especially organizations like yourself, that are full of members that are very active in our community. There's no club that is more active in the Lions in the community. So your members are acutely in tune with the needs of the community, so that they can speak and, and give money to organizations and people. You know, going back to hearing about all the, all the funding you've put into, you know, the campground, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, another forty thousand dollars in the, in the plans. To me, I want to do whatever I can to help support you guys, because that ten thousand dollars that we could potentially gain, air quotes, by changing this, this fee structure to me, is, is penny wise versus pound foolish. Yeah, we can get a little extra money, but then we're not getting those added benefits. Maybe we could, maybe we won't, but that changes the dynamic moving forward. So I'm, I believe we're talking about it at tomorrow's meeting, tomorrow's budget meeting. So we'll, we'll talk more about it then, there's no decision being made tonight, but I just want to let you guys know that I support you. And just want to make sure it works for you, for all of you and your members, because you're doing a great job down there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Councilor Gillick?
Hi, thanks for coming in. It's always good to see folks that are out and about in the community and, and hear your pieces and hear your stories. So I would agree with Councilor Norbury. I, I don't think there's anybody in the district of Tumblr Ridge who hasn't benefited from your services or from your generosity. I can say that my own, I know specifically my own child has benefited a couple times with your generosity. My, my concern moving forward is just that we all get on the same page. Like, as we've talked here tonight, you've always felt that it was twenty percent net. I feel like we thought it was twenty percent gross. So for me, I think that's where my concerns lie, is to make sure we're all on the same page. And, and I don't disagree with the fact that if, if it's about taking a loss, so then maybe we look at that, but at least that then we're transparent with it, that people know, okay, the Lions is out there and the Lions is there, because it's, it's got a soft spot in everybody's heart here, too. I hear that a lot. People that just live in Tumblr Ridge, they just enjoy going out and spending the, you know, some time out there and, and that. So for me, it's, it's more about let's everybody get on the same page and make sure that we're all coming from the same place. And so I'm looking forward to having that discussion tomorrow night as well, and, and hopefully we all, we all agree when we're all sitting down and sign that piece of paper. So thanks for coming in.
Thank you. I would agree, we need to be on the same page. One, one question I have, I guess, the park is scheduled to open up on May twelfth, which is not very far away. And we have the opportunity to do the renovations or the improvements to the upper loop next week. And I know we've got to wait for you guys to come back and give us a yes or a no on that, but just letting, letting you know, either we get it done before the campground opens up, or else it doesn't happen till next year. So I leave that with you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from council? So a couple of my questions are just that. Have you submitted this, this work or idea in regards to the sewer line going down to the sandy, the sandy dump there down below, as well as the water line? Has that been submitted to staff?
We talked, we talked to the CAO on that respect, but we haven't given her a written letter yet, and, and we have to do that. But again, I'm not, not going to go down that road without having some idea that you're going to support it. Otherwise, why would I waste my time?
Okay. And I, and I understand that in regards to whether it's the operational leases at the twenty percent, eighty percent split, whether it's net gross or, or gross. But to do the sewer line and the water line, I suggest you submit that paperwork as soon as you can to staff, whether you're still waiting for our response or not, doesn't mean you have to do that work, if you don't get, if you decide not to, to do it, if, if that's a decision of council. But without that being submitted to staff and staff making sure that fits, you know, is allowable, that could be a holdup as well as, and I, I marked it down to make sure I asked about that in regards to when you talked about the line to get stuff.
It'll be entered to your CAO tomorrow morning.
Okay. I, I just, again, that might have been operational side where staff can deal with, because they've asked come to council, that means we'd have to probably call a, a special meeting, because we only have tonight and tomorrow. So yeah, when it comes to the lease options, and, you know, I appreciate the comments in regards to the twenty-eighty split. It used to be all, you know, it was this, and it was that, or it wasn't that. You know, I am a Lions member, I'm not on the board, so I'm not in a conflict. I want to make it very clear that I am a Lions member. I was part of the campground, coming back to the Lions. So when I joined the Lions, as Ms. Grace had said, that I was joining the Lions when she first, when I first moved to the town, and I used to camp down at the, at the Flatbed Campground whole time. I said Lions campground. I remember after joining the Lions, I mean, I took it to, to the president, which was Mr. Walsh, and made comments then, either we remove or sign, or we take the campground back, because it's, it was in dismayment. It was in a dismay. So I remember being part
So I remember being part of that with Mr. Walsh and Tim Schneider at the time when we approached the community or the council, and it was exactly what it was said. When it got changed, I'm not sure. I know we had this conversation a couple of years ago in regards to this split as well, but I don't know when it got changed or how it got changed, but it used to be the twenty-eighty split, right? It was always that way after your bills were all paid because that's why you did the upkeep because there's a cost to upkeep, whether that's replacing siding, redoing the gravel on the roads. You know, you mentioned the playground. To be honest, we did it. The playground was an idea that I came up with. We got all, it was all sponsored by businesses of the community. The only thing the district did was put the gravel in. It's the only thing they did. And I think the agreement then was for them to keep the upkeep of doing the inspection and rotating the gravel yearly to make sure it was still fluffy enough. Like, you know, you look at some of the other upgrades you've done in regards to the barbecue area for the picnics, that was all redone by the Lions, painted and all that and rebuilt. There's the shack at the back, that was re-cleaned up and everything else done by the Lions. So like, it's a huge, it's a huge thing what the Lions have done down there. The same aspect of it, I mean, obviously we'll have a bit more of a discussion tomorrow. I know staff is submitting some stuff which we'll have to get added into the agenda tomorrow. It'll be a lead ad, just some background information on where the numbers came from. So we're being transparent on the information we had and how it was GL'd out because I think that's really, really important. So it's not that there's a loss of money from the taxpayers, but that's what we're talking about. We're talking about that there's thirty-five thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four that that's from the taxpayers. So to me, we need to be transparent about that. Like we, from our side, we have to be open on why that's there, be able to answer to that. It's not about that we, anybody up here is against the Lions, I listened to everybody talk tonight, nod. I think the community supports Lions when we, when you see the Easter egg hunt you guys are doing, you know, the candidates, you guys do everything. There isn't a time that you can't reach out to the Lions to do a barbecue or whatever is needed. So there's definitely one-hundred percent support from the residents of Tumler Ridge, never mind the community as a corporation. But we just need to be transparent with those dollars and as being open and noted why we have a loss there, why we're taking a loss to the taxpayers there. So I think that's the conversation tomorrow to see what the fit is. Like, I'll be honest, maybe there'll be a discussion about changing, I don't know, until I get all that information, have an opportunity to read through all of it. But a hundred percent support the concept of Lions, what they've been doing down at the campground, but as a whole, you know, the barbecue. I remember the barbecue was actually purchased by the district. It was a grant that was given to, I think Mr. Walsh is the president, came in and applied for a grant to buy a barbecue. And that's what came out of it, a big barbecue to be towed behind, that can go anywhere, Emperor's Challenge, it goes up there, it goes everywhere. So yeah, I appreciate, I don't have any other real questions. I'm assuming on the financials that you supplied, or maybe not even financials, but there's a thing that's mentioned personal and it was, it's twelve thousand dollars this year, seven hundred and ninety, seven thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars last year. I'm assuming personal medical on the sheet that was handed in?
Yeah, that will, I could ask, where's Lyman Mary Jane? She can respond to that.
They want to see the document.
Staff will have it right there on the computer. I'm assuming it's personal medical?
Yes, staff will see medical.
Okay. Okay, appreciate that, thanks. I was just, I assumed it was that, but I just wanted to make sure.
Fair enough.
Okay, Counsel, Jellic.
Yeah, and I guess I just wanted to be clear as well as, because I know when the conversation starts, for me, what is important is, is again, as Mayor Kalka talks about, is the transparency. And for me, it's about, are the things that you're doing up there as an improvement, is that your responsibility or is that the district's responsibility? And so for me, part of that with the lease agreement is really important so that you're not spending your money on gravel because maybe that's something the district should be spending their money on. So trying to get really clear on those pieces as well so that, you know, you guys aren't feeling responsible of taking care of something and that comes back. And that comes from my own experience running the Monkman RV Park. You know, like, so I was out there for a season and then when I came to council and said, you know, like, I think that these improvements could be made, they went ahead and they voted on those because that's, that capital asset belongs to the District of Tumler Ridge. So again, like Mayor Kalka said, like, it's, we just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and, you know, as he said about making sure staff knows that you're gonna dig those holes because there's probably legislation that we don't know about on district owned property and all of that good stuff. So yeah, so anything you hear, it's definitely in support of the Lions, it's not against it, it's about trying to make sure.
Thank you, thank you very much. Just to mention regarding the upper level, that's going to increase your campsites from forty-four to forty-seven. That's extra revenue for Lions, also extra revenue for you guys. So it'll level things out and we'll reseed it so it looks pristine. We're trying to make it as close to a regular campground as possible, albeit the fact that it's still a rustic campground. So thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Yep, you're not done yet. Sorry, sorry you're not done yet, Mr. Ims.
I thought you had your ticket.
So again, I don't, I have not seen this lease, draft lease agreement, have not, nobody on council has. When you say you can't afford it, again, I really like to have this in front of us so I can, you know, look at it. I mean, and I understand that you and staff have worked and, you know, now we're going a different angle after we had worked through that. But like, my understanding of a lease agreement, yes, there's taxes other than the Lions have to pay, but actually you can come in and have that dealt with. You'd be, come in and apply for paperwork to be tax exempt. So I'm not sure if you're aware of that or not. So like, when I look at this eighty-twenty split and then when we talk about a lease, and again, I don't have all the information, so I don't want to get too deep into it, but like, we tax exempt a lot of associations within the DTR, you know, the Sportsman's Association, the sledding, churches, can't remember them all off by hurt, but we do a lot, the Arts Council, the Legion, there's the Saddle Club, thank you. So there's laws that we do that tax exempt. So when that piece comes off and including your taxes as garbage and recycle pickup, if you're tax exempt, well, that's already included. So, you know, I just want to make sure that's clear because to me, it seemed like when the draft lease concept came up before council, I know there was some lines here and everybody can watch us online, but I'd say council was split at the first. Like, jeez, what does that look like? Well, we don't know and it's a draft, let's go with a draft, let's check it out, right? So I'll be, I was one of the ones that were kind of on the fence, eh, jeez, you know, eighty-twenty split, but yeah, they want to go to a lease and that's kind of weird. But I understand because of, you know, between net or gross, maybe this makes sense, but, you know, again, we just need to get that information. I know staff has supplied it, I know some council received it, mine must be in my thing and I didn't receive it when I picked up my agenda on the weekend. So we just need to go through these numbers and have a look, how it was GL'd out so we have answers back to the taxpayers. And I understand that the Lions are taxpayers also, you're all residents of the community, but there's also non-Lions members that, to me, if, you know, I support the Lions, but I also gotta speak to why I'm okay with taking a twenty thousand dollar or twenty-two thousand dollar loss on that campground, this would be the reason is why. Or maybe we need to do a fee for service, something. Again, staff will keep us out of the weeds. We obviously have to follow the charter, we gotta make sure that we're doing things the right way. So that's the conversation we'll be having. So that's all I have, I'm not sure from council. Right on, you're free. Thank you very much again for coming in, we appreciate it. And be honest with the Lions Club, you don't always have to wait till something like this maybe isn't working out. You can always come in once or twice a year to give us an update, what's going on and which way you're heading. I think it's great for our community to hear it too.
Well, that would be great.
Right? We livestream, lots of people watch it.
Yeah, we will do that.
Okay, moving on to Community Futures Development Corporation, Peace Lyard, Mariah Green, General Manager, and attends to present project, council and the community and to ask for support of the project through the district's economic development team. Welcome.
Thank you.
I gotta flip this over some, I'll see where I'm at my agenda. Jesus.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I see that our presentation is up. Are you happy with where the microphone is?
Yep.
All right, so my name is Moira Green, I'm the General Manager, Community Futures, Peace Lyard, and I'm here today to speak with you about the Rural Communities Immigration Pilot Project, which we are doing in partnership with Northern Lights College. Next slide. So the presentation agenda today is a conversation about what is the RCP, how does the program work, funding and operations, the role of local government, the order of magnitude, the future, and then any questions that you might have. Next slide. So the mission of the Northeast B.C. Rural Communities Immigration Pilot Project, I'll only say that one more time, is to address labor market and recruitment challenges faced by communities and employers in Northeast British Columbia by attracting and retaining newcomers to Canada to build community through embracing innovation, new cultural perspectives, and helping newcomers build a successful life. To strengthen the capacity of the Northeast to develop, deploy, and retain a skilled workforce that will address persistent and emerging labor market needs and demographic challenges. To test a unique and innovative approach to immigration selection that emphasizes a coordinated approach between the federal government and the communities. And to improve retention of immigrants in the Northeast by fostering a welcoming environment. This, the primary objective from Canada's perspective is to, is to change the way that new Canadians are distributed across the nation. So they want them to distribute new Canadians into rural communities. Pardon me, thank you. The program is based on a steering committee, which is composed of economic development professionals, so those would be EDOs from local government organizations, chambers of commerce and settlement agencies that are working in the Northeast. The project process is first identification of labor needs by sector and subsector and then selection of those. So the steering committee is in the final draft of that selection, they're called NOC, National Occupation Codes, NOC, and you're welcome to Google them, it's quite an interesting look. The second part is engagement with and identification of approved employers. So this program is employer-based. The employer applies to the program to be accepted and then the employer submits their candidates to the selection committee for recommendation to Canada. Recruitment, so once the employer is accepted to the program, they will recruit and present a verifiable offer of employment to the person who they want to sponsor or recommend. That offer of employment must be full-time and permanent, so no contracts, no casual, no part-time. Then the application happens, so the candidate through the employer applies to the steering committee. That steering committee or the person who's working for the project will verify the efficacy of that application, ensure that all the parts are there, try and work with the candidate on making sure that it's the kind of application that will be successful from Canada's perspective for permanent residency. And then that application goes to a selection committee of the steering committee, I realize that we have all kinds of, but, and the selection committee will determine whether that application gets recommended to Canada as part of this project. And then annually, we will review those subsectors, those NOC codes, and the employer applicants each year that the program proceeds. The project structure is a steering committee with two co-chairs, a project administrator, some accounting support, and some offices and premise support. So for the most part, the project administrator will be working from their home office. If they need an office in community, Northern Lights College will provide that. In most of the communities where the project is taking place, they have a campus, just like here, and Community Futures will do the accounting support for the project. The steering committee has presented a simple operating plan, which is included in the package that you've received for the project. The first year's budget is, represents a single administrator and then finance support with a tiny little travel budget, which I am spending by being here today. Subsequent years, you'll see that the amount of administrative support increases a little bit in the subsequent years of the project. The thinking where that is concerned is that the number of recommendations that will be allocated by Canada will increase, and so the amount of work that it will take us to process the candidate applications will also increase. The original application, which is included in the package for your review, called for four full-time positions to operate the budget. That would have made the budget requirement per year north of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which we felt was unreasonable and unattainable. So we've trimmed that requirement by asking for the support of local governments to provide some in-community employer vetting. So when an employer applies to the program, one of us needs to visit the employer to make sure that they actually are who they say they are, that it's not just a telephone and a chair in a room. Because the immigration sector is a place where crime is very prevalent. And so our job is to make sure that we are not allowing for fraudulent use of the program. And in a community like this, you already know all your businesses and so it's just a pleasant visit to welcome them to the program. For the first year, we have funding from South Peace McKenzie Trust and Northern Lights College. So our total budget for this year for the twenty-twenty-five operating year is ninety-five thousand dollars, and the subsequent years are currently unfunded. So what this means is that we are working to try and find funding for years two to five. We've applied to NDIS, Pacifican, South Peace McKenzie Trust, and Jobs Economic Development and Innovation. And we'll go on to the next slide. So local government plays a crucial role in this project. First of all, you know your local businesses, you are keenly aware of your community's recruitment and retention challenges, you're partnered with, already with your community organizations and chambers of commerce, and you have people in community who can be available to work with or meet with the prospective applicant employers. And your staff are also integral to the operation of the steering committee. And so you've had members on the steering committee when it was a working group while the, while the application was in consideration with Canada. Next one, thanks. So the project area is all of the Peace River Regional District and the Northern Rockies Regional Municipality, so that is an area of about two hundred and twenty thousand square kilometers. And to put that in perspective, the whole of the UK is two hundred and forty thousand square kilometers, so it's a lot of space. The annual budget requirements are estimated at about two hundred thousand dollars annually for years two through five inclusive. The twenty-twenty-five allocation for recommendations, so that's the number of people that we can recommend to permanent residency through Canada, is sixty. The allocation is reviewed on an annual basis, will be based on federal government immigration policy and our success. The sector analysis is an annual process, so this year we are presenting like a set of occupation codes. We need to have a new set of occupation codes ready to go for January second if we are able to fund the project for years two through five. And then each subsequent year, oh, and the project is a calendar year, not a fiscal, which is very confusing for me certainly. Employers may be added and removed with each year and each sector analysis. Currently, our strategy is to allow any employer who wants to be part of the program to register and apply and be approved, and then they just stay in the program until their sectors come up. We have heard from some of the communities that we've been working with that there are concerns about impacts to housing and healthcare resources in community. Our response is, first of all, the number of recommendations that we're looking at certainly this year is very low. And secondly, we anticipate that the majority of the people who are going to be applying to this project through their employer are already here. They're already working and living in the communities that we're serving. And because we don't have any funding for years two to five, the working agreements, which you all have in your packages for your information, the working agreement allows us to terminate this project with ninety days' notice. So if we are unable to fund this for years two to five, we will provide notice to Canada on January second, twenty-twenty-six, and we will terminate the project on March thirty-first of twenty-six. The future, thank you. So the steering committee plans to operate for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six year using the funding that we have available. Funding requests have gone to Pacifican, NDIS, South Peace McKenzie Trust, and JDI, and resource requests have gone to all local governments in the project area. So that's what I'm here today to speak with you about is the memorandum of understanding for your resources in your community. The project will provide funding details and an operating budget for years two to five inclusive to local government and other funders in June of twenty-five for consideration in your twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven deliberations. So we have asked that NDIS, South Peace McKenzie Trust, and JDI, Pacifican, give us a commitment to whether or not they're going to support the project and at what magnitude they're going to support the project by the beginning of June this summer. Because that way we can develop a budget, present it to all of the partners. Because that way, we can develop a budget, present it to all of the partner local governments, and say, is this good enough? Should we go, or should we not go? And if the project is unable to secure funding, we will give notice. And I believe that's all. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Awesome. Thank you very much for coming in and giving an update. I remember when this program first started off in the working group.
Yeah.
I, I remember that, that part of the stage, and obviously, we're moving through that. So I do appreciate the update. Counselor Knoxana, then Counselor Norbury.
Thank you. You've mentioned that to help offset some costs, you're looking for staff hours from the District of Tumbler Ridge. Do you have an estimation on how many hours that would be, a week, a month, a year?
I do. Thank you, your worship. How many businesses on your list?
Three and a half.
So you have four businesses on your list. I would suggest that between now and the middle of November, each business might need an hour and a half of your time. The rest of that is two hours or two and a half hours a month for steering committee duties, which is all, your staff are already participating in.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor Kaka. Thank you, Counselor Knoxana. One of my questions, you knocked off my list. Appreciate that. So, Gavin, getting kind of the gist of, of what you're doing, I think, I think it's a great thing, and how to assist businesses in attracting employees. I had some questions regarding the, the steering committee. So, you know, from your, from your delegation, you said the employer would select the, you know, the immigrants, the applicants to the program. They would apply to the program, and that would go to the, the steering committee. And the steering committee would make a recommendation to Canada on their eligibility into the program, and kind of give them the, the go-to? Like, is Government Canada taking direction from, from the steering committee, or are you guys the final deciding factor, I guess?
Thank you, your worship. I think what you're asking me is, let me, let me take you through the process and see if I can answer the question. So if you, counselor, owned a coffee shop, you would apply to the project, and your coffee shop would be an approved employer. You have a person working for you. You issue them a permanent, an offer of permanent employment, irrevocable offer of permanent employment. That person then fills out the permanent residency application as per the Government of Canada. The application comes from the coffee shop to the steering committee. So essentially, your, your request as an employer is that we fast-track your person's permanent residency application. We review it, well, we, the administrator will review it for accuracy and for, there's a point system attached, there's all kinds of, there's language system attached. So we review it for its likelihood of success. If it's deemed to be successful, then a selection committee of the steering committee, so a subcommittee, will just determine that this one, yes, gets recommended. Then we tell Canada that we're recommending your coffee shop person. Your coffee shop person submits their application to PR under this project, but it still is subject to all of the regular rigor that any permanent residency application would be. It just gets expedited through the process. Does that make sense?
Follow-up.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kaka. Thank you for the explanation. I'll be honest, I, I don't own a business. So this process, I'm, I'm familiar. People, I know people, businesses do these types of things, but it's pretty new to me, so I appreciate that explanation. Another question I had is, are you approaching businesses that are going to benefit from this program for funding to help support the program, or industry that may potentially benefit from this program?
The, the Government Canada is very clear that there can be no fees or gratuities attached to this project. So the project came from Canada with no funding, and the project is not allowed to charge a fee for service for the project at all. So, so we are, the only way that we can fund this is through granting agencies or through the support of levels of government.
Counselor, did you look, and then Counselor DeSau?
I have a few questions, but I'll, I'll start with a couple. So, the benefit of the program, then, if I understood what you told Counselor Norbury, is basically that it expedites the process versus what is currently in place?
Thank you, your worship. Yes. And, so as soon as your employee applies for permanent residency, they get to bridge their visa while their, their application is in the system. So it allows them to stay in place, continue working, while their permanent residency application is being processed.
Okay. And I'll ask the next one, and then take another turn. So, this is available for people coming to Canada, for people that are already here, working, and newcomers to Canada? Is that the idea?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor DeSau, and then Counselor Hoff, or Knoxana, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming in. I just have one question. We have a federal election looming. How do you feel this is going to proceed with the new, with the new party?
Do you feel this program will still go forward, or do you think it could be axed? Thank you, your worship. We asked that question early on, because, because the insecurity around it was certainly making the organizers quite uncomfortable. This is approved and has survived the prorogation of, of Parliament. And the only thing that will change around this program will likely be the, the federal policy around the number of new Canadians they're willing to entertain, the, the nation is willing to entertain in a year.
Good. Counselor Knoxana, then Counselor Hoffman.
Thanks. You had mentioned a coffee shop in your example, which is fine. My question is, is this only for smaller businesses, or can other entities apply? So we're short doctors, nurses, teachers, mine workers, but those are for different types of organizations? What would this specifically be targeted towards?
Thank you, your worship. There's, there's no limitation on the type of organization. The, the decision factor lies within, with the occupation codes.
Right.
And having said that, though, I've learned a lot about immigration in a very short time, and there are multiple streams of, of immigration available. So one of the things that we, that we didn't do in the first year was try and address the shortage of workers that would be specific for Northern Health. And the reason is, they have an expedited, skill-based system that they can use specifically for those people. Major industry, we're very interested in speaking with. The, the lion's share of the pressure that we're getting right now is from the retail, hospitality, accommodation sectors, who are experiencing a very real loss of manpower in the next six to eight months. And one of the things that I've learned about that is, is if you are a franchise owner, and due to staffing shortages, you are unable to maintain the minimum hours of operation that the franchisee requires, then you are penalized as a business.
Follow-up.
No, no follow-up. Thank you. That's very interesting.
Counselor Hoffman, and Counselor Gillick.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Green. This is pretty on-point for some of the things that are needed. I do not envy some of the things that you're going to be facing trying to do this. Thank you for the Northern Health clarification. That was actually the first thing I was going to, and I, I know that they have the ability to, to expedite already, so I was hoping that those spots weren't being taken up by that. Is there any requirement to stay after they receive their permanent residence within remote or rural areas?
Thank you, your worship. There's a, there's an intent-to-reside document that's part of the application process, and, and one of, and that's one of the ways that you get extra points. But once a person is a Canadian citizen, they have all of the rights and freedoms of all Canadian citizens to live and work anywhere where they would like to.
Yes, that's speaking of the, go through the process after that they're here, and that's a minimum, I think, three-plus-year process to do that. So that, that's what I was wondering, if there was a requirement to stay or not. I'm, I'll.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have another one here. No, it's here. It's good.
Counselor Gillick.
So, with the funding not, like, so that you're still looking for funding for two to, for years two to five, would we be committing, like, if we sign this MOU with you, would we be committing any funds from the District of Tumbler Ridge?
Thank you, your worship. No, you would not. This, this is, the MOU is specifically for the, the cooperation of your economic development staff, so that we don't have to pay the additional human resource and travel costs to do those site visits ourself.
Okay. If the District of Tumbler Ridge opts out, does that mean Tumbler Ridge businesses are ineligible?
So that is a very good question, and it's a difficult one to answer, and I will try and be as diplomatic as.
Fair.
If one community opts out, and the, the project is required to do the work, then there is no reason why every community can't opt out, so that the project is required to do the work for the whole region. If that happens, we cannot fund it, and the project will die.
Okay. Thank you for your, what was?
Yes.
Thanks for being candid.
You're very welcome.
And, so can we opt out at any point in the five-year program?
Same problem.
Okay. That makes sense. And, can I keep on? So, is the District of Tumbler Ridge liable for any candidate that was recommended, and that, let's say that process goes south, for whatever reason? What does that look like?
So one of the reasons why I gave you a 120-page packet is because the conversation about that kind of liability is in the MOU with Canada. There, there was a previous five-year project, which was not employer-based, and which two Community Futures offices participated in, Vernon and the East Cootenies. Their experience is that, yes, there are occasions where the project is, is, has been sued, but mostly that's due to the incursion of what the government calls bad actors into the process. So, if the rest of the question is whether or not turning someone down in your community is going to have blowback on the district, the, the decision that was made at the steering committee level, and which is being written into the terms of reference literally as we speak, is that the people who serve on the committee from your community will not serve on the selection committee for your community. So Fort Nelson will make Tumbler Ridge's decisions, not Tumbler Ridge.
Okay. Yeah, and I apologize for not reading your 121 pages.
Oh, that's okay.
All the way through, but I appreciate you referencing back, so I can go take a, take another peek with questions.
Yeah, you can, it's quite easy to find the section you're looking for.
Okay. And so one final question, if the mayor will indulge me. So, the clarification on the expecting the site visits and audits, it seems fairly straightforward how you talked about it, and that's where you're needing the, the economic development staff is, and it makes sense. Like, they know the business, they know they're running a telephone out of a backyard. So I think the site visit seems, seems legit, like, that's clear enough. So audits, there was something mentioned about audits. So what does that look like?
So the audit is, so let's say we recommend a person who, who is in the permanent residency process. At some point in the duration of the project, the Government of Canada is going to say, we would like you to confirm that that person is there.
Oh, okay.
And that they haven't been trafficked to, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, I got one for you, and then I'll go to Counselor Knoxana. Can you tell me if our local chamber is a part of this?
Yes, your local chamber is a part of this.
Okay. And they're sitting on the committee?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Counselor Knoxana.
Thanks. You mentioned 60 persons allocated for this year. Is there a matrix, or some sort of number, on how that would work for a community like Tumbler Ridge compared to Fort St. John? Or is that still in the works, and that information will be coming down the pipe eventually?
So, we've, we've been talking about that. So, to kind of put that in perspective, the first of the invitations to the businesses on the list went out this last week. And we already have back from 12 of them, their confirmation of completion of the Government of Canada training. Like, so they are like, on it. The way the occupation codes are shaping up is that a, a large portion of those occupation codes are located in that low education and experience requirement, high customer integration kind of job. So, front desks at hotels, baristas, that kind of stuff. What we're thinking is that we will allocate a portion of the overall recommendations based on the, on the, the percentage of the total NOC codes, right? So that we've got some, some consistency, and that, so that we're holding some recommendations back to ensure that the higher skilled, more difficult to apply for, longer duration applications have a, can get a space, if that makes sense. What we are not considering is dividing it up by community, because, like, if, if your three and a half interested employers want six recommendations, then it would be unfair to say, okay, well, you get three, because you only have three interested employers, right? And, does that make sense?
No, that does.
Yeah, so we're struggling with that, actually.
No, that's fair. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Counsel? Counselor Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that this is at least expected mostly to be for people that are already here. So that doesn't really impact on a day-to-day basis, if it extends whatever visa or whatever they're on. Do you have an idea of how long it would take a foreign person to go through the process to get a job, and how much of that time this would actually cut back for, for them to get in, or for an employer to fill a position? It's okay if you say no, that's.
Well, I just want to make sure that I understand what you're asking.
Okay, I'll try to be clear. So, by example, there's an employer looking to fill a position.
Yes.
They found a person in country X. If the person were to apply without this, how long it would take for them to get through, if they could? And how much of that time could be expedited by going through this program? So what does this really save an employer in time and effort for a given position?
I can't answer that.
Fair enough.
Follow-up?
Nope.
Okay. Got a couple for you. If our local chamber's already a part of this, how many people normally support it from a community? So I know you're looking at Act Abdom. It says later in our reports, like, I believe Dawes Creek is the chamber there that sits on it.
Yes. So in Fort St. John, we've got the, the chamber manager and three staff from the, the city, as well as one representative from the Settlement Agency. In Dawson Creek, we've got a member from the Settlement Agency, a member of council sitting on the steering committee, and the Dawson Creek Chamber is recruiting, so their chair has been sitting. Fort Nelson, there's two members of their economic development staff and their chamber executive director.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it helps, just to see it, and like, hear from other communities. If there is a new government, do you think that this possibly could be funded by Canada? Is, do you plan on, after the election, if government changes, do we, do you plan on applying back to Canada, saying, listen, you guys came out with this? Are you going to fund it?
So Pacifican is our federal funding arm, and we have asked Pacifican for funding. So I don't, I do know that they are not willing to have a funding conversation with us until after the election, because they're in, they're shut down, essentially. But it is my hope that, that Canada will fund Canada's project, yeah.
I love that. Be candid about it. Because I do, I believe if Canada's shipping this out for, and it's great to see that we have chambers sitting on it, local, local municipal staff and such, but to me, Canada should come to the belt in there and put some money into the pile if they're, you know, going to push this project forward, instead of trying to always have time taken away to apply for grants. Because, you know, there's time there, too, right? We don't talk about that time, right? But, you know, you gotta apply to yourself, to Mackenzie Trust, you gotta, that takes time, too. Right? So to me, if they want a project and, and try to help fill these vacancies, to me, they should be funding it. What was, what would happen if in year two, it is not funded, cannot find funds? What happens to the Canada? not funded, cannot find funds? What happens to the candidates that are, are just getting placed or, or within the?
So I think if you're in the pipeline, you stay in the pipeline. But it would mean no new applications, and we would, we would close the project.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, any other questions for counsel? All right. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for spending the travel budget to come to Tumbler Ridge. It's the best place to spend the travel budget is coming to Tumbler Ridge. The drive is amazing on our road, so.
Yeah.
The roads may be not amazing, but the views are.
It was a beautiful drive, and thank you so much for your time. I very much appreciate it, and I know that your team will keep you posted on how the project is going.
Perfect. Thank you again very much. Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Take the recommendation, please, Counselor Noczena.
That all items in the April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five consent agenda be moved for information.
Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, all in favor? Carried. Are there any items counsel would like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Gillick?
Seven point two, please.
Discussion, I'll second that. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Counselor Gillick.
I am just wondering if there is any objections by staff to have this happen. I think it's a good opportunity. Um, you know, I'm not the one who has to monitor the plan though, so, um, but I appreciate the-
Ms. Scott?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay. Sorry, I just seen her hand up, but I couldn't go directly to her. My apologies. So I was wondering if that was up.
So the first one there, I guess we'll put a different number on it at some point.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I'm just, I, I thought that the presentation, uh, the letters there, and I think why not take advantage of stuff when it's free, um, is one of my mottos. And so as long as it wasn't an extra burden to staff, I, I wanted to say go ahead if that's what we needed to say in order for it to go forward.
Uh, Ms. Scott?
I, I just want to clarify, it's, it's not free. It does come with some strings. If we join and they give us some free kits, it's up to us to replace them when they expire. So it's not entirely free, plus we have to provide training to staff to use it. But the fire department already, uh, as a emergency services provider, has, uh, similar kits. They're not nasal kits, they're injectable kits. So the fire department has those already. So if we were considering, you know, for example, maybe having some kits available at the community center, um, each kit, uh, I think they expire, they have a two-year shelf life, I think. Each kit costs approximately just shy of $200. Um, and then the, the training, so we would want to make sure that staff have training on how to use it, uh, which is free, but still making sure everybody's trained. Um, but also to, part of the application process to the program, um, is, is a matrix of, of risk and what their risk is when they kind of, um, determine which communities are in need and which communities aren't. And just with the consideration that in all likelihood, if somebody is having some kind of incident at the community center, they're calling 911 anyway, and 911's going to be responding with the staff that have those kits, that have the training.
Yep. And thank you for that. And before I go to these, rest of these councils about this, let's make a couple of comments about this. This also came up at the PRD. It was well discussed about trying to force staff to do something they're not comfortable doing. It was very, very adamant from staff's side there that we could be, uh, as directors at that board, be the same thing here as elected officials, uh, putting this mandate in, and we're directing employees that do not feel comfortable, whether they take the training or not, do not feel comfortable doing that. Um, so I just want to make those comments because I think it's very, very important. I have the training, I've done it. I, I know Chief Curry has done it. Uh, not everybody is comfortable getting involved like that. Um, when you do get the training and we put a mandate in, into the DTR that this is what we're going to put in, we're putting this into place, and whether it's just a community center, any staff member that is in a community center would have to take the training, but anybody that attends a community center on behalf of staff, so if there's a meeting over there and stuff, those people would have to have the training. And we're putting, to me, we're going to mandate that staff must interact with something that they're not comfortable with. So I'd just be very careful with that part of it. I just want to make sure, uh, counsel's aware of that. Not every individual, um, feels comfortable having to deal with that. Uh, Counselor Hoffman and Counselor Gillick?
Thank you for that, Mayor. I mean, just underlies the point that I was going to make, that our response time and, uh, that we do have a small town and a small distance to travel in an emergency situation. Um, I was wondering, and I'm not looking to step on any toes on, uh, information that shouldn't be spread out, but have we had incidents requiring the, the distribution of naloxone in town over a certain period of time? I'm just wondering if this is a regular occurrence here or not, and-
Ms. Scott?
Not at the community center. Have our emergency response services been called to a situation like that? Yes. But not at the community center or at a park or one of the district-owned facilities.
Okay. Thank you. I, no, that, I will take that statement as it was intended, and I am good. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Gillick?
Yeah, I appreciate your, uh, comments there, Mary Kalka. Stuff I didn't think about at all. So I guess my next question would be, wh- where I would go with this next, after, after hearing from Ms. Scott and, and your comments, Mary Kalka, is, does our emergency, um, the emergency people, do they think this is something that is needed in our community, or do they think that we are set up, or is this a question for this meeting? I don't know.
Yep. Ms. Scott? I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if Ms. Scott can answer, but it's up to her.
Uh, in, in terms of, of these kinds of kits versus the, um, injectable-type kits that the fire services uses, um, I don't know. Uh, the Director of Protective Services is here, and, um, I would like to, uh, take advantage of, of his expertise to see if he can, um, provide that answer.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, to Counselor Gillick's question, I don't believe at this point this is something that I see implementing for the District of Tumbler Ridge. Um, as the, the CAO alluded, we've had zero incidences to date where this is, would prove to be beneficial in a, uh, district-owned building. And we do have a ready, steady supply through our own supply chain for the intermuscular versions that we carry as an emergency service.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Um, yeah, I mean, but for me, it comes down to staff's, um, comfortable, comfortability, comfort level with, uh, with this initiative. If that's when they feel that they, they, um, we already have an organization within our organization, emergency services, um, that can manage this, then, you know, I'm content with that. I know myself, I've received naloxone training at the, at the Public Library when I was there. I had a naloxone kit that sat in my desk drawer for four years, and, um, our, one of our local paramedics taught me how to use it. So, you know, there may be other partner organizations that would be interested. I can't speak on their behalf, I haven't spoken with them, so I just want to, you know, make that aware. But, um, yeah, just in general, I, I think it's a good thing if, if staff speak up and they say, "Well, you know, are emergency personnel doing this? We don't feel comfortable. Good enough for me." But, um, yeah, as I said, I had it in my desk drawer for four years, never had to use it. So, and in some areas, the Public Library is the place that, uh, you deal with these types of incidences, and it's, if it's right there, it's important. So, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion about this item? Okay. And there, any other items counsel would like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Mary Kalka, six point two, Prostate Cancer Foundation, Canada.
Okay, discussion. Counselor Noczena for a second. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. So we have, um, a letter from Prostate Cancer Foundation, Canada, asking if we'd be willing to light up one of our buildings in blue in September for a day, a week, a month to raise awareness. Um, I know, um, I've participated in Movember that talks about men's prostate cancer, and for men, it's not a if, it's a when. So I think this is something that is worthwhile for us to support. So, um, before I make a motion, I'd like to ask staff if we can accommodate this in one of our municipal buildings. I mean, it doesn't have to be Town Hall, it could be another, another building, but, um, yeah, curious if we could accommodate.
Yeah. And I actually asked the same question earlier in my emails. Uh, Ms. Scott?
I don't see why we would not be able to accommodate.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. Um, gave, gave staff the heads up on my behalf, appreciate that. So I'm going to motion that, um, we have staff, um, support the Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in September by letting up municipal, municipal building in blue.
Seconder, Counselor Noczena, discussion. I guess my comment or my question back to Counselor Norbury would be, we're going to give the Pacific Municipal Building, or leave it to staff. And, and the reason I ask that, to me, we should be using a prominent building which is town hall.
My part, my, my order of preference would be Town Hall than the community center, but at the end of the day, um, I want to leave it up to them in case it can't be, can't be accommodated. I don't want to say it's this or that.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Call to question, all in favor? Carried. Any other items counsel would like to bring forward for discussion? Counselor Noczena?
Six point five.
Discussion, I'll second that. Counselor Gillick, Counselor Gillick, you need to declare, please.
Usually I just step out. I'm going to declare conflict as I am a school trustee.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Noczena?
Thank you. I'm happy the Minister responded to us. However, we asked for a meeting, and we asked for a meeting for specific reasons. Um, I was recently at a school district initiative where they fully admitted that their grad grades are falling drastically, which shows a huge issue in our region, including Tumbler Ridge. And we'd like to talk to the Minister to find out why this isn't being addressed. We don't have staff, we don't have qualified staff, this is repeating year after year after year, and our kids are suffering. And the Minister is ultimately responsible for this.
Fully agree with you, and I'm glad you brought this, uh, up for discussion. I had a mark for, uh, bring up for discussion, resend letter. Thank the Minister for the letter that we received on April ninth. And when can we meet? Um, honestly, I think a motion should be made in that, in that form. You know, they're thanking us for the letter on March seventeen, that's great. It stayed there, right in the meeting, or in the letter that we wanted a meeting, and, you know, I'll be honest, our, reached out to our MLA that staff forwarded to. He, he'd contact me that not only did we send a letter to the Minister, but also CC'd him on it, he also printed the letter out and handed it to the Minister in the hallway, and wanted to confirm if they've reached back out. And I said, "Well, we finally received the letter." But to me, we've asked for a meeting. And my, my comment would be that we, again, give clear direction back to staff, and staff obviously followed it already, and it's not staff's fault, Mrs. Ministry, but we don't just send it to the Minister of Education, we sent it to the Premier, we sent it to the Minister of State, which is Brittany Anderson, stating that we want a meeting. Give us a date that we can come to Victoria to have the meeting. That's what we're looking for, that's what our first letter asked. I think it is very, very important. Again, I don't have young children in the school, but I'm definitely hearing about it from our, from our local residents, and what they're dealing with with their children at the high school or the elementary school. And I, you know, like when you brought it up in regards to our minister meetings and, you know, we're in a crisis, like this is, like, we don't need to wait till UBCM, and I said that, and in my opinion, we need to get down there and have a discussion, how can we fix it? Not just how can the Minister fix it, what else can we do? Pilot projects, whatever. Is it housing that, that this is the biggest issue in Tumbler Ridge is making sure they have housing? Then we need to bring that back here and get counsel on board for some kind of housing, whatever we need to do to make sure we have these education professionals here. I mean, we're, we're fighting for, for medical professionals, we're, we're starting to go on diversions again, and it happens. But education is huge. I mean, it's, like, you brought it up, and, you know, after you brought it up, I do what Ball does. I don't have young children in the school, so I don't, you know, my, my pulse isn't always there unless somebody brings it forward. And when you brought it forward, I think it's hit home that we need to do something, we need to do something for our children and our youth. And I think that's our job, is to go down there, have a, have the meeting to see what other steps can be taken besides, you know, "Oh, they've upped the funding to the, to this, and they're going to be coming up and having a meeting with school this fifty-nine." That's great. That's great. What about with elected officials of the community that, that we're hearing from the parents? That we're, we're collecting taxes on your behalf and sending them to them. I mean, we have non-for-profits in our, in our community that are supporting our school in regards to making sure they have technology, that it's something that the province put in and left it up to a, a school board to put the law in and then not supply the, the technology. So to me, there's, there's other issues there, and just upping a few, um, sixteen, um, teacher hiring incentives of ten thousand, that's great, don't get me wrong, I think they're trying to do something, but, you know, I think they left Tumbler Ridge out last, last, uh, the last year on the initiatives. We weren't one of the ones that were chosen to be able to be on that program, and I think it's affected it. You know, I think housing was a, was a concern here last year, I believe. It came up around counsel about that we could be losing, losing some teachers due to, to the housing, but also through the daycare. There were some issues with daycare. So to me, I think that's the meeting we need to have, and we need to be face to face to see how we can work as a, as a team. Not just have the, the ministers do it themselves, but how can us as elected officials in the DTR help assist filling our schools with the teachers that we need, that it'll help our children and our youth? So, I fully support it. I, I bet, whenever a motion goes on the floor, I think it doesn't just need to go to the Minister of Education anymore. I appreciate that the response came back. To me, purely prompt, but we asked for the meeting, so that's why I think it needs to go to the Premier EB. I think we've got a great connection with the Premier. I mean, I thought we had a great connection with the Ministry. Uh, this one was kind of a, kind of stood out when I seen it come into my email. Um, but again, uh, also the, the Minister of State, um, she's supposed to be advocating for the rural, rural area, that's one of her mandates from the, from Premier EB. So this is an opportunity to, to get it addressed. Uh, Counselor Norbury, and then Counselor Noczena.
Thank you, thank you, Mary Kalka. Thank you, Counselor Noczena, for bringing this one up. You know, um, I was happy to hear some of the initiatives that the Ministry got back to us. It's great to hear they're doing good things, but corresponding via letters isn't a way that really creates a conducive conversation on how we can help. I remember when SC fifty-nine came in, they were interested in working with us about getting creative when it comes to how to work with incoming teachers, current teachers to attract and retain. And that's something that we can get involved in this conversation with the Minister. Like, look, I get it, you know, like there, there's only so much money to go around, but, and we're a community that's willing to stand up and put our money where our mouth is, and our resources where our mouth is, um, if we can come up with a good plan. And we need to have two people, two organizations at the table to have those discussions, and that's why we need a meeting. Absolutely support it, this is not what we're looking for. Um, yeah, so, thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Noczena?
Thank you. Um, I'm glad you mentioned UBCM because I feel like if we have this conversation in September, we have lost another school year.
Yep.
Hiring needs to happen now for school to start in September, and you mentioned the Health Center going on diversions. Great, they closed down and people have to go to Dawson. Unfortunately, our kids still need to sit in that building with violent substitutes because the school district put people like that in a classroom with our children. I'm not sure if Brittany Anderson or the Minister for State would be willing to meet with us, but I think that it's worth at least sending a letter so that the Minister of Education knows that this isn't something that we're letting go. Um, we've spoken with the school district, we've attended meetings, we've had them here, we're still in the same state. There is hiring incentives, but last time they had them for Tumbler Ridge, one of them was left unfilled. That shows a bigger issue than just throw some more money at it. We need actual action for our kids. So I am willing to make a motion that we send a letter to the Minister of State, the Premier, and the Minister of Education, once again requesting a letter, or requesting a meeting with them to discuss the state of education in Tumbler Ridge.
Yeah, and to, just on, before I get a second, I would, to me, I would just do the recommendation, we reply back to the Minister of Education, you know, thanking, thanking them for the letter that was, uh, received, uh, April ninth, and that we're resubmitting the letter that we're requesting an in-person meeting, and I would CC the Premier and the Minister of State, Brittany Anderson. And I, and, you know, if that's okay with you to make those changes, because we just want to CC it so that she, they realize that we're actually starting to add other people now.
Still motioned.
Okay. Seconder, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Okay, and I think it's really, really important, like obviously we sent the initial letter, and I, and I believe that we should be sending it to the Minister, not always adding, um, the Premier or other Ministers, but, um, we have used the Minister of State a couple of times, and it has definitely benefited us in getting a response. Staff was having some issues getting a response, um, from BC Housing, probably doesn't surprise counsel. Um, but adding Brittany and her, um, Chief of Staff, who then, uh, circled in, um, Premier EB's Chief of Staff, um, the meeting happened fairly quick afternoon on a Friday, I think it was Monday morning, we were meeting with BC Housing. Um, so I think that's why it's important to start adding these people. Like, to me, we need to have this meeting, and like you said, if we wait any longer, the, the, we're going to lose that next school year. And to me, I think, you know, it's great that we have the teachers that we have in our community today, but they need support too. They need the other teachers for the support. Um, so they can have, you know, the day off or whatever they need, but I think it's really, really important. Um, Counselor Noczena?
Thank you. I would agree. We have some stellar staff in our community, and I hope that we can retain them. I just wanted to mention, I know it's in policy, but that we looped the MLA, Newfield, MLA Newfield in with this letter as well.
Yeah, and it is in policy, so it would be automatic. But yeah, no, it's good to make sure. Just put a pulse on it to circle him in. He needs to be kept aware. I know he talked to me here the other day. We're supposed to be connecting because, again, I said, like, it's great they received the letter. But, okay, any other discussion? Okay, can I call the question? All in favor? Carried. Yep, somebody can grab Counselor Julik, please. All right, any other items council would like to bring forward for discussion? I'd like to bring forward six point seven for discussion. Counselor Nuxana for second. All in favor? Carried. This here is where they're looking for the, if we have any concerns in regards to the regional growth strategy or not. It's a time to submit it if we're concerned or not, or submit that we are in agreement with it so that it can go forward at the PRRD. So I guess just from council side, does anybody have any concerns with the regional growth strategy? I know they were here and presented in front of council. And if not, if somebody would like to make a motion that we are supporting it. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. I'll make a motion that we support the PRRD's Regional Growth Strategy bylaw number 25712025.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. The other one I'd like to bring forward for discussion would be six point six. If I can get a second, or Counselor Nuxana? Okay. Here's an opportunity again. I know not everybody from councils attending the NCLJ, but I would be curious to see if council wants to meet with Chiro or not while we're there. I know that he is coming to Tumblr Ridge, or has suggested he is so far. I know staff, as we've added into our calendar, we've added a meeting for it and stuff like that. But I think this is another opportunity to have a discussion with him before that, not about getting into the weeds of why we want him here. I think we need to keep that, so all councils around, but I think we can still have some dialogue. I'd be curious to hear from the people that are attending the NCLJ. Counselor Dusso?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you for bringing this forward. That was my next on the list. So I think it is also, we need to keep up on the Northern Health. Keep going with them to see what they're doing, what's happening, keep engaged. So I think it's a great idea that they're going to be at NCGLA. And yes, we should definitely have a meeting with them.
Okay, is there anybody on council that would have, I know not all of us are attending NCLJ, but is there anybody that's not attending that would have a concern if we met with them? Okay, I put a motion forward that staff sent an email or response to Northern Health suggesting that we would like to meet with them during the NCLJ between May 12th and May 15th. Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, all in favor? Carried. Okay, any other items council would like to bring forward for discussion? I'll bring six point eight for discussion. Counselor Nuxana for second. Just curious for people attending. I believe everybody received this in their email about attending it. I know myself I'll be attending. I'm just curious from council side. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. I'll be attending, and I RSVP'd myself, so, thanks.
Anybody else from council planning on attending this? Okay, I'll put motion forward that we approve travel for Mayor Kalka and Counselor Norbury for attending the UBC Rural Immersion and Welcome Gathering. Secondary, sorry, y'all get done in a second. Secondary, Counselor Norbury, Counselor Nuxana?
I would like to amend that we add Counselor Nuxana to that.
Okay, secondary, Counselor Norbury. Discussion on the amendment. Call the question on the amendment. All in favor? Carried. Any discussion on the amended motion? Okay, call the question. All in favor? Carried. All right. Okay, moving on to bylaws. Seven point one, public hearing follow-up zoning bylaw number 7472025. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. I'd like to recommend that council receives this report for discussion.
Okay, secondary, Counselor Julik, all in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. First off, outstanding job, staff for putting this together. Thank you very much for digesting all of the suggestions and giving recommendations back to us. I'm sure this is a lot of work that was put into this and saved us a lot of work. I mean, ultimately, we don't have to make the decisions that have been recommended, but in my opinion, they are quite, quite well researched and advised. I appreciate that. I will move the first recommendation that staff revises section 5.1.5 of the zoning bylaw to include the proposed clarified language for home occupational hours of operations.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury, second recommendation?
All right, that staff removes section 5.8.3 and 5.8.6 from the zoning bylaw and include them in the upcoming amendment of the business license bylaw.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury?
That staff revises section 4.2.3.1 of the zoning bylaw to reference intersecting parallel lines instead of curb lines for determining site triangles to align with the text and with the existing diagram on figure 11.
Secondary, Counselor Hoffman, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried.
That staff add as amended to all, nope, skipped one, that staff removes clause 5.1, 5.5.1H and revises the definition of the secondary suite to align with language in the 2024 BC Building Code effective in March 31st, 2021.
2025?
Thank you.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you. Maybe, we'll see if I can pick it up on number five. That staff adds as amended to all references to the Building Code to ensure ongoing compliance with any future updates or changes to the code.
Secondary, Counselor Dusso, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Counselor Norbury?
That staff adjusts the zoning bylaw based on council directions and bring back a revised version for second and third readings.
Secondary, Counselor Dusso, discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carried. Okay, new business opportunity to participate in the FCM Panel on Destination Development. Report dated April 22nd, 2025 from the Director of Economic and Community Development regarding the opportunity to participate in the FCM Panel on Destination Development. Recommendation, nobody wants to make one. I'll move that the Economic Development Department will be, oh, no, sorry. The council approves allocating up to $5,000 from council's budget to support staff attendance at the FCM Conference and participation in the Destination Canada Panel. Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Counselor Julik?
I just want to put it out there. I think that Jessie does an amazing job when she does present. I understand that she has a really full docket, so, and I get that. So I'm okay with that, and I understand she's not our staff, so that would be up to Lisa Scott. I guess I just wanted to put it out there that I'm understanding of that. And while I will support this motion, I also understand if we need to go another way.
Okay, yeah, it doesn't say active, it just says staff. So that'd be up to Ms. Scott. Just talks about us. It'll come out of the council's initiative. That's why at first I messed up because I had it marked alternate. Any other discussion? Just want to make a couple comments. To me, and I guess up to council, I'm not looking for the conference registration for a staff member that's going to be attending. I think they can go down to the panel and, you know, however their flights not work out, they can figure that out. But for attending the conference, it's $1,300. Going down to the panel, and they get a free day pass. I'm not sure if council wants to add the conference registration. I'm not adding that into this motion. Okay, Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Yeah, I support the alternative to the recommendation. I mean, I've heard Mrs. Olson speak. I know that we're not sending just, we're not putting a name to this. It's staff. But I know our economic development is the, are the best people to speak to this if they're able to make it because they have intricate knowledge and, you know, heard them speak before. Do good job. Thanks.
Thanks. Yeah, I made the comment. To me, when something like this comes up, it's different when it's, I mean, a lot to the official panel, you know, whether I can make it or can't. And if I can't, you know, to me, a council would be able to step right into that. When we start talking about some of this inter-immigrated stuff in regards to Destination Canada Panel and stuff like that, to me, that's a big scope. I mean, I think we have a fairly good pulse on it. But I think, to me, staff would have a very in-depth understanding and background. Sure, it states in the earlier one that they could provide it, then you got to try and dialogue it. And to me, I think that's why I was more in favor of the alternate one, just because staff should have that hammered down. Okay, can I call the question? All in favor? Carried. Rural Community Immigration Pilot Steering Committee update and MOU endorsement, report dated April 22nd, 2025 from the Director of Economic and Community Development regarding Rural Community Immigration Pilot Steering Committee update and MOU endorsement. Recommendations, please. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. That council endorsed the district's continued participation in the Northeast BC Rural Community Immigration Pilot, and that council support the execution of the attached memorandum of understanding to formalize the district's commitment to delegating economic development staff support to the project, and that council authorized the mayor and the corporate officer to sign the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the district of Tumblr Ridge.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, discussion. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kalka. Yeah, after hearing Ms. Green's comments about this project, I recognize the importance behind it. Having this submitted by our economic development officer definitely supports her cause and that she feels that she can support it. And beyond that, I see this as a way that we can help local businesses in our community. We are very limited in what we can do due to the community charter and how we can assist businesses. So I'm always looking for ways that we can. And this seems like a real easy way for us to help them get the staff they need to provide services in our community. So fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nuxana?
Thank you. I think there's still a lot of questions with this project, but I do feel comfortable that we should sign this MOU at this time. Hoping they find some funding for the future years, but I'm comfortable that this, the financial burden isn't coming back on the municipality at this time. With the answers that we got today, I'm excited to see what it does for our community because we do need some of those staff, not just for entry-level positions, but for bigger positions as well. So excited to see what work they can do in our municipality and others.
Thank you. Counselor Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. Now, I agree that this has some promise. I think also the nature of it, the scale of it, the focus of it, all are positives. And I think it's trackable. We can see if this makes a direct difference to, well, northern communities in general, but ours as well. We can get a number attached of how many people we may get based on this. So hopefully, it'll be supporting a larger scale initiatives in the future, but let's take our first step.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Scott, I have a couple. I know it was a disaster in the delegation, but even in the staff report and background says minimal time commitment. Can we get what minimal means? You know, we had some numbers thrown out, and then it was, you know, an hour, hour and a half per business, plus some hours for meetings and steering committee, just so we understand what we're committing to?
Yeah, so just to, I guess, recap what Ms. Green said. She is expecting the commitment to be approximately two hours a month to sit on the steering committee plus approximately 1.5 hours per business that signs up. Currently, there are four businesses, or almost four businesses that have signed up. But I will ask the Director of Economic and Community Development if she can provide counsel with any additional information about what she thinks may be required in terms of staff time to assist with this project.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mayor and council pretty much covered it there. The steering committee meetings, a little bit of time for each business. This is a pilot project, so we are kind of learning as we go. I don't foresee it being a lot outside of our normal working time. The work communicating with businesses that are interested has already happened, really. It's just sending them on to the employer training now. And I don't foresee it being much more than an hour or two hours per business.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, can I call the question? All in favor? Carried. 8.3, 2025 Budget for Gifts at Functions, report dated April 22nd, 2025 from Executive Assistant. 2025 Budget for Gifts at Functions. Recommendations, please. Counselor Nuxana?
Can I recommend we open this up for discussion first?
Yep, secondary, Counselor Julik, all in favor? Opposed. Mary Kalka is opposed. Carrie, go ahead. Counselor Nuxana?
Thank you. Reading that we haven't given a gift to Soto First Nation and recognition of opening their cultural center makes me think that we really need to get on this fast. But I am hopeful that we can find something that's meaningful from our community. I really like the pictures, but we have some really great photographers here at the picture collage. We have some really great photographers here in town as well that perhaps we could, we could get a local picture or print for them, or a selection like the collage. Like, that doesn't really matter. The gifts for special events, though, I want to be, or us to be very aware, what we're giving someone needs to be useful. Sometimes people are flying after. They don't want to drag swag home on flights that they have to pay for luggage always. So I'm hopeful we, as the table, can come up with something more meaningful than generalized swag, whether it's, oh, I've donated to Tumblr Ridge Sports in your name or something else, I think is what most people are moving to these days anyway. But happy to hear it from anyone else. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Just want to make sure it's clear to all of council. There was a small token gift given to Soto during the opening of their culture center. This process is just, I mean, we're a bit behind it. I mean, I take the blame. I had a collage on my house. I was supposed to get staff a picture. Took me a bit to get the pictures so they could understand thing. I think the reason they went with collages and its pictures around the communities is because it's going to one of our First Nations, and this is Treaty Eight, and this is their land. So we were trying to take pictures of, you know, no disrespect, not a moose or a bear, but areas of Treaty Eight within our, within the local area of Tumblr Ridge. I think that's why staff came up with it. I think they did a great job compared to what I did present to them on opening day. You know, it's something I had to take off a wall, and we threw a plaque on it because we couldn't get an order in any time. So we went with that process. So this, you know, I've talked to Chief Paquette quite often about it, told him I was a bit behind, but I was getting on it. So he's well aware that, you know, there was a procedure I had to go through. But I think it's, you know, we need to get something there that is meaningful. And to me, again, I, you know, I won't say it was weird, but, you know, when I looked at it, I was trying to figure out the size of this thing. And staff has took me today and showed me the approximate size of what it actually looks like. So I think this is meaningful, and I think it represents the community of Tumblr Ridge, or so from the district of Tumblr Ridge and our residents on their opening of their, of the culture center. It is, we are a bit behind, 100%. But we did present them something on that day. Staff made sure of that. So, you know, appreciate staff making sure we had something. And then just making this, you know, this procedure. We didn't have it. You know, it's something that, you know, I'm glad staff's brought forward because we never had it. So, I mean, you know, you're reaching out to staff a week before an event or the day of a meeting and saying, hey, listen, we need gifts. What can you get us? That's what we were doing. Like, you know, that's probably been done in this municipality for a very, very long time when we don't have a policy or a con- That's what we were doing. Like, you know, that's probably been done in this municipality for a very, very long time when we don't have a policy or, or a concept. You know, I mean, to be honest, to me, we were taking from Ms. Scott's act of budget by going, you know, downstairs and opening up a closet and throwing stuff in a bag. You know, there's, we set budgets, you know, they propose a budget to, to council through their, through Ms. Scott and we approve it and they, they judge it on all their. Trade shows they're going to and stuff like that. And then we go down and. Take, you know, I mean, I've met with Kelly Lake and Wesmo and Soto and, you know, when you do meet with the First Nations, especially when they come to your community, you want to have a gift to give them. That's something I learned very clear. So we, we would go down there and take coffee cups and take swag and bags and everything. So what that does was took, took out their budgets. So I think it's great that staff is bringing this forward. Think this gives us an opportunity to, to have that conversation of what we really want to see. And, oh, you've mentioned a couple of things with people flying and stuff like this. I, I guess my, my understanding of this is, is, is for that. It's for those. Meaningful dialogues with individuals, whether that was when we had the captain from, from Canada's Parahawke come to Tumbler Ridge and, and speak at our, our high school in front of our youth. And the teachers and elected officials, you know, there, there was gift there. I mean, it was something that, again. Call up, hey, listen, never even thought of, we need gifts. There's town, town staff running around trying to find something. So I think this procedure helps that process. I think it's very, very important that we have staff available for that. When we do meet with our First Nations, that it is something, I don't think it is expected. But it is, it is a gift from us to them for them coming. It's a, it's a very good gesture. It's a very, very important gesture. Something. I believe some of the new elected officials that came to Pemkin Days the first year with me, never been, sure learned, sure learned around what happens there. And I think it's very, very important that we make sure that. The next elected officials and three terms down the road, those elected officials know that here's some stuff and this is why that policy is there. I think we were blindsided when I went to Pemkin Days. I know I fell blindsided. So I think it's important. My thoughts. Counselor Oxana and then Counselor Hoffman.
Thank you. I'm not going to argue that it's not important. I would just like us to be mindful of what our gifts are. Nobody needs more pens. Nobody needs more coffee cups to fly with. If we could give something that's more meaningful. If we were meeting with Soto First Nation, perhaps they have a youth sports team or something. We could be doing a small donation from the District of Tumbler Ridge too. And I'm not sure how that looks for policy. But just ensuring that we're very mindful about what we're giving. Because I'm sure as we roll into, it'll be our whatever anniversary soon. We don't have space on the walls for more things. We don't have space in our cupboards for more things. So what would we as individuals like to get as gifts or as an organization like to get as gifts as well? And maybe look at that through a lens of what we would give going forward.
Counselor Hoffman and Counselor Norbury.
Thank you, Mayor. Mindful of both of your points. I think you're, both have the points. I, I think we do need the swag stock. I do think we need pens. Whether you want another pen, some people like pens. It doesn't really matter what's on this list here in that sense, but. I think we do need this for visitors, for when we go to conferences, for everything to have the stuff. But I do like the idea of being more mindful, especially with our regulars and our neighbors than standard swag. And I think there's room for both. Like, we keep the cupboards full for this council and the next and that we. Take another step for, for our regulars and especially for our neighbors. So. For today, I think going forward with this is, we will absolutely support this, but I'm very much open to having a discussion of. Thinking a little bit more and having a little more consideration for, for future gifts as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Norbury and then Counselor Gillick.
Thank you, Mary Kalka. I think I'd like to give everyone's time to talk about a good pen. And, you know, I can tell you the pens which are good. Well, I couldn't tell you, but I can tell you that the Fairmont roller pens that you get, the little silver ones, they're amazing. Whenever, whenever I say the Fairmont. If you take one, if you, so if you take one the first day you're there, they will replace it the second day. So you can get two pens from the Fairmont. They're great pens. They're, they're compact. I love a good pen. I have, I have. And the pens that, that the district gives away are great. I'm a little jealous that they're giving away swag. I'd love to have them utilized at, at my office, at my desk. I appreciate a good pen. So, and that's me. I can appreciate, we all have different things. Yes, I've been to conferences. I do not go to the trade shows and pick up stuff, except for pens. Because I only have so much room in my bag, but, you know, I remember when I helped out at the, at the booth at UBCM. People loved the pens. They loved the notebooks. So I, I think it's just because, you know, we, we as individuals may not like something, doesn't mean that they're not effective tools for gifts. People appreciate a token. I know that when I give the healthcare professionals their gift basket when they come into, come into the community. It's, you know, the, the cloth bag, a notebook, a pen, a bar of soap from one of our local soap makers. Coffee cup. It's the act of giving that is the, the special part. What's inside? Maybe they look at it, maybe they don't. I've heard, I've heard differing opinions. Some people do, some people don't. They just like the token. I think it's important for us to have that token. Yes, I would agree that we want to make sure that it is useful for them, but at the same time, the token act of giving receiving means more than the actual gift. So. I'm in support of us having this budget so that we can have those on hand. And. When it comes, when it comes to the, the picture. Yeah, I mean, yeah, if we, if we had time, we could probably come up with like a perfect gift. Maybe we can get a huge lump of coal, you know, with Tumbler Ridge stamped on it or, or something like that. Or we can, we can reach out to some local. Photographers. But, I mean, I know we do have a good inventory of pictures of our own community, which I think are reflected here. And, you know, I think it's fine. I think it's good. Thanks.
Counselor Gillick.
So when I was reading the report, my initial thought was, are we putting the cart before the horse as. There's a note in here about attending First Nation events. It is customary for the district to bring a gift that can be shared. Staff are considering creating a policy or procedure to help determine appropriate gifts for such occasions. I think I'm on the same page as Counselor Oxana about this. I think that we want to be mindful when we're doing our cultural exchanges. Our cultural trading. When I look around the council chambers and look at some of the things that we've been given, they're very. Notably. Attached to the things that we got. So when I look at the, the hanging over there from West Moberly and. So I don't know what that looks like and I, I like what that would look like for the cultural trading part. I appreciate that there be a motion there because I think as Mary Kalka talked about going to Pemkin Days and being kind of caught flat footed. If there is a policy, then, then that's there for the next council coming forward. I also have seen. A lot of, a lot of places doing donations on behalf of. And I really appreciate when Counselor Oxana talked about. You know, donating to something in that community as we talk a lot about our community and the different nonprofits that. Support our community and, and go further. So I, I definitely lean more to that as well. I would like to see that. What I do see is some logistics and stuff here. So I don't know if this is the night to be making the decision. There would be a policy. There'd have to be a budget. Logistics, how do we manage it? Can every counselor just go in and help themselves? Do we have to put staff and, you know, like, I'm not. These are all little pieces is, is why I think that it isn't necessarily a decision that we have to make tonight. Absolutely. Let's approve the frame and the picture. I appreciate that it's all sites from Treaty Eight territory. And I think the problem is, is we've never, like. For me, again, it's about what is unique to Tumbler Ridge and what can we do? And does that make sense for the cultural trading part? And that is the report that, that is mentioned here that would be coming back to us. The only other thing that I would maybe say aside to that, I would be game for some kind of kid thing, like. Tattoos, those little frisbees you throw away. Like, if I was to say some kind of swag, that would be where I would lean because I know that kids love that stuff. I know when the kids from the kindergarten came here to talk to the mayor and they got to sit in his seat and do all that stuff, it would have been really cool for you to have been able to. To have some of that stuff. So far as the pens and the other swag that are included in the report, I think they're good ideas. Again, though, I would rather see us look at doing a donation on behalf of over and above the cultural because I, I agree, Mary Kalka, those are really important things. And part of our learning here is a council. So that's where I lean on this and kind of hope that maybe we. Maybe ask for some more information to come back with a policy maybe around it, if that's what staff feels or, or yourself, however council's feeling about it all.
Thank you. Counselor Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, I would like to ask staff on, I, I know they're asking us to pick a number for the second recommendation. I'm having trouble coming up with a reasonable number because I have no idea on how much we're actually putting out in a given year. So I was wondering if there's a estimate of what conferences, visitors and all that would. Get, would cost us in a given year if we were to do a sort of a standard swag bag. Going forward.
Yeah. Before I go to staff, I, I, I'll be honest. I, I think when we're talking about swag and stuff and, you know, I think we need to have that dialogue and I think you're right, but. In, in regards to like the frisbee things and tattoos, I think that can be a different discussion. I think what we're talking about here and, and, you know, maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, this was something because again. I was going to use the word steal, but I don't do that. I came in and asked, we need something. You know, we're meeting with the First Nations, you know, Karen's given direction to, to run a town hall because I forgot about it last minute. And we go down or she goes down, deals with other staff and all of a sudden we're going into a cupboard. Piling stuff into a bag. So we'll have something there to present with the First Nations. Sometimes we don't know how many are coming. We end up with three bags, but there's six people show up. And now we're running back. Because we knew there was three coming to grab three more, three more stuff just to hand out. I'll be honest, Ms. Scott was there when Kelly Lake came last time. They were so excited when they received their bags with their coffee cups. That, that was the biggest thing for them. Not only going out and seeing the signposts that they never got to see. That we talk about. They never got to see it. They finally got it, went out to, to the public works yard and got to see it. They were hugging it and kissing it. It, it was pretty good. The, the thing, and they talk about how when they go home, it, it's not kept by the counselors or the chiefs. You know, they may keep an item, but they, they hand it off to the elders and to their youth. So that, that's why that part's important. So to me, I'm not looking for stuff that we just, you know, just hand out every day to whatever and, and have an expense budget on, on, on stuff. To me, I think the idea of like frisbees or tattoos, because I do believe we should have something in the dino mobile. For when, when council or even staff is traveling with the dino truck. That if, if children or youth approach, that we have a coloring book. We have a frisbee. We have a tattoo. I think that's very important, but. To me, to set a number to it, I think we just, you know, we can ask and see, maybe we can get more information. Maybe this needs to come to a P and P where, you know, like your comment there, what is. Maybe asking, what does staff spend, spend the act of budget? I mean, if I went to my office, pull up the budget, about say what, what, what was budgeted for 2025. But, but maybe they can give us an idea. Not sports, you know, the FCM, the, the UBCM trade show plus the sledding, the snowmobile expo. And this, and we give out about this much stuff to this many people. There's 10,000 people or 20,000. Gives you an idea of a budget, but maybe we bring it to a P and P to have a bit more discussion. In regards to what kind of a budget number. I'm not in favor of, of going through here and picking which one we want. I think staff have done a fairly good job and when. When we want something done quickly to, to make sure because three more people have joined the table for the meeting. But, you know, so I'm not sure if that answers your, Counselor Hoffman. I'm just thinking that we could, we could do that, just get them to bring it to a P and P. So it gives them an opportunity to look for that budget number.
I, I appreciate that. But right now we have, from the sound of it, bare cupboards. And going through a PP and another process, what I want is put something on the cupboard that we're not struggling for the next three months every time we have a, a visitor. Which is why I wanted to put a reasonable number and put it back in staff's hands and be able to do that. I love the coloring book idea, by the way, if we have that in the truck like that, that rings. But I, I don't want to go down this list. I don't want to pick. I want to be able to tell staff that, okay. Maybe not the year, the next three months, that we have a number that they can restock and that, and I also don't even know what the delay is for putting on whatever badging or putting on things. So. I appreciate that. I really do like the personalized idea for our neighbors especially. Whatever we decide to do, I have a feeling I'm going to be on board, but in the meantime. Whether we're going to conferences, whether we're having visitors, I think we need something, which is why I'm looking for a reasonable number for that.
So just so you're aware, we don't have bare covers. Act Dev has a budget already.
Okay.
So they're, they, careful how I speak about here. Staff, staff already have merchandise purchased for when they do things, trade shows and such. That at this time, what's happening is we are, when, when I have a meeting with First Nations or I'm going to a First Nations. Or we have a representative from Team Canada, you know, we, can we grab something? So what we're doing is we're going and taking it from somebody else's budget that we approved in 2024.
Okay.
So what staff is bringing forward is an idea that maybe we put some kind of money out of our council's budget. To have a few items of our own so that we're not taking stuff that they've pre-ordered for certain trade shows or they ordered 500 cups and that's enough to do all the trade shows in 2025 that we're not. Council doesn't take 50 or 100 of those things and then they're, they're 100 short. So even if this takes us a couple of months to get it at a P and P and have a bit more open discussion, we don't have empty cupboards. I would think if we ever, if we need something as we're going through this process to make sure that we're being fair to, to Ms. Scott, that, you know, if something does come up, we're having meetings and. We have to borrow a few things that we actually look at replacing that because the previous years we didn't. Like, you know, we, staff came forward with a budget, we approve it. They, they set those budgets on what they're going to attend and yet I've taken. You know, $300 worth, $285 a year, it looks like in here. That makes that budget short. She, she, they, Ms. Scott had budgeted to make sure she had enough and all of a sudden now the mayor or the elected officials had this meeting and we've taken some. So. No different than when we did their culture awareness, safety training. We gave gifts to both representatives or all four representatives when they came and did the blanket exercise. That didn't come out of our closet. That came out of Ms. Scott's.
No, okay, I'm, I'm fine with that and I'm going to keep that in mind and whatever we come with, with, we're. Whatever that rider on there that we resupply, whatever we've borrowed in the meantime.
Counselor Dusel.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I like what everybody has, has had said here about things. I like, you know, maybe doing a donation. But, you know, I also like hats. Hats are great. Blankets are great. Coloring books are great. So I, I think we should move this to a P and P and have a better discussion on this. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we need to move the, you know, obviously the second recommendation to, you know, defer to a P and P, but. You know, I understand from council side in regards to donations and stuff like that in behalf of people's names. I don't know if we ever came into a, to a scenario like that when we're. You know, like, you know, when we meet with First Nations, I mean, it's a little different. You know, maybe we need to have a little, little different material there. But it's important when they return with their elders. You know, I've heard it from, from both Chief Wilson and Chief Paquette. He doesn't call himself the Chief of Kelly. I can't remember. He's. He doesn't call himself the chief no more. Sorry? Kamara or something? Yeah, so. So, you know, they, they do really respect that. And, you know, I think we just got to be careful, like, when we're saying that we want to donate money. I, I mean, I think staff will need to look at that. That might be another concept when we come up to. Defer number two, that we give a bit of discussion, you know, you know, what, what's our, our budget for trade shows and stuff and what does that look like? Another thing would be what if we were to donate in a charity on behalf of somebody? I, I think that if we had that information at P and P, it helps that discussion as well. Counselor Oxana and then Counselor Gillick.
Thank you. I think ultimately what we're talking about now is three different things. So I like the idea of bringing it to a P and P where we can have the full discussion. So I'm happy to make a motion that council approved purchasing a picture frame collage with plaque for Soto Cultural Center as presented.
Secondary Counselor Gillick. Discussion. Call the question. All in favor? Carry. Second recommendation, the council authorized the amount to purchase items as a gift for inventory that could be used for special guests and events throughout the year to be deferred to a P and P. With staff attaching approximate budget for the trade shows and with that, how many representatives to the trade shows does that cover? As well as the legality of donating on behalf of the DTR in somebody's name. Secondary on the deferral. Counselor Oxana. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carry. Schedule of meetings. Anything from council? Just so everybody is aware, is this Saturday is the volunteer appreciation brunch as well as the tentative prescribed burn. Anything else from council? Okay, and just so everybody's aware, there's also a meeting tomorrow night. It's on the agenda or on the calendar. Counselor Gillick.
I see that there's a PPC meeting scheduled for May 12th, which is when three of you will be at NCLG.
Yeah, I was bringing that next. No, no, that's good. No, good that you brought it up. Yeah, I, I actually believe it. I mean, we all, I think majority of us are flying in on the 11th, but I mean, my, my thoughts are.
the 11th, but I mean, my, my thoughts are that we should be just moving that meeting. We could move it to the 26th or the 27th? I'm not sure if that's okay with council. That works in their schedules before we do it. Ms. Scott, that would work in your, your schedule, like staff's schedule?
Yes, that would work in staff's schedule. Another consideration was perhaps moving the PPC to May 20th, and then moving that regular meeting to the 26th.
Thanks, couldn't remember. I thought it was.
So we'll be pushing it, everything back a week is another consideration.
Yeah, thank you. I know we talked about it, couldn't remember for sure. So there's that idea too, is moving the PPC to May 20th, and the regular meeting would be the 26th. I remember having that conversation, just couldn't remember for sure. Counselor Nuxana and then Counselor Norbury.
Thank you. The 26th falls over, nope, only me. FCM, travel. But I'm only, I'm the only one traveling that early, I think.
Counselor Norbury?
Yeah, that works for me.
Motion?
Yeah, a motion that we move the May 12th Policies and Priorities Committee meeting to May 20th, and the May 20th regular council meeting to April, to May 26th.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana, or sorry, Counselor Dusso. Wow. Discussion. Call the question, all in favor? Carry. Okay, anything else from council in regards to scheduling meetings? Ms. Scott, when's our next schedule, our next meeting schedules come out for 2026? When will staff start working on that procedure? Because it comes out fairly early in the fall here. When do, when does staff start working on that?
October, November.
Can we just maybe make a suggestion that when we have conferences, that we just move those meetings? Would that be, like, what does council think? So like, just to be ahead of it, have a look at it? You know, whether we get two different calendars, this is what your normal calendar set up with a conference, is this what it would look like, so that we're presetting our schedules? Council? Counselor Julik?
I feel like that's what staff tried to do this last time, and then NCLGA changed the meeting times. So, but I'm totally in agreement. I think they tried to work around that, and then they changed some meetings on us. And I feel like that happened one other year too. But I'm agreeing with you, yeah, I think that if we tried and planned it on the already scheduled stuff, we're a leg up.
Good. Yeah, I mean, if they change the dates, there's nothing that staff can do. But I believe these dates were picked before our schedules came out, because even keeping rule was out early, and their dates had changed too, because they moved theirs because of NCLGA. But yeah, I mean, staff does a great job, but it's just, we approve it, and then I think it's just extra work for staff to move them. I think it affects their schedules too, with their senior staff meetings and stuff, trying to, to make sure they're getting the stuff ready for meetings in time. Okay, is there anything else from staff in regards to meetings and schedule?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any notice, notice of motion? Okay, Counselor Business from the floor. Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kekalka. I want to give an update on our South Peace Health Services Society meeting that I chaired a week ago. I want to give an update on some happenings in the region. So in Dawson Creek, we are supporting doctors' gift baskets for incoming doctors. So, you know, the South Peace Health Services Society is putting together gift baskets for when they arrive. At the Recruitment and Retention Committee, we've been discussing the, the keys to doctor retention in like, the steps that we are taking before they arrive, when they arrive, three months after they arrive, six months after they arrive. And the initial onboarding gift is one of those things that doctors themselves have identified as motivator standing committee, because it shows that we're appreciative. So they like that token. So what happens is that the, I think the Doctors of BC, anyways, one of the organizations, there's like six involved, they send out a questionnaire to these doctors what their likes and dislikes are. Then we devise, we devise gift baskets that we give them when they come in. We've supported eight to this point, and now we're going to continue. We, we've committed to 20. Northern Health expects anywhere from eight to 12 doctors to be incoming over the next 12 months. So that's going to cover this, probably move into the year after. You know, something similar to what we do here in Tumbler Ridge, and that's, you know, give gift baskets to all medical professionals, not just doctors. It's very well appreciative. And another thing that we did recently was we, we are supporting gas cards for Chetland, because our Chetland representative pointed out that they had a nurse that was going to come in and assist them on a emergency to prevent diversion. But no one was going to, no one was going to give them gas money to come forward to St. John Chetland, so they didn't come. I'm like, it seems like the silliest thing to put a hospital on diversion on, because somebody couldn't pony up $100 for gas money. So we've, we've preemptively put forward some emergency funds to assist in that regard. And moving forward, if there ever is that need, we will support it, because we can't have communities go on diversion, because somebody doesn't have gas to make it in. So, thanks.
Well, just on that, I believe that's one of the mandates from Northern Health, is cost of travel. They preach it. They've preached it in open delegations. Oh, if staff can please note that for the first meeting at NCLGA. I mean, that's kind of weird. I mean, if that's why we're going on diversion, whether it's in Chetland or Tumbler Ridge, is because we won't pay for fuel.
Counselor Nuxana and then Counselor Dusso?
Thank you. We had a TRA meeting a couple of weeks ago. I don't, a week ago, sorry. They are extremely busy. Their website is trekking along, and they hope to have it online in the next couple of months with a really cool model for memberships and, and things for their flagship clubs. The TRA executive director will be planning, or, you know, supporting planning a number of events this summer with their organizations. So it, it'll be a very, very busy summer for Tumbler Ridge, which is great to see. And one of their biggest things is the BCSF awarded the 2025 Excellence Award to the Snowmobile Association, I believe, or Mountain Bike, Snowmobile Association, I'm pretty sure. And they had the award there, and it was all engraved out of wood and everything. So it was really cool to see.
All right, thank you. Counselor Dusso and then Counselor Julik?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. I'm glad to hear everybody got my reports from my last meetings. I attended the GeoPark meeting this last, on the 17th. One of the questions, I did, I did send that out to all of council in regards to Monkman. The other thing was, that came up also was Canusa Falls, because the outlook now, part of it is not usable. And I just received an email today to state that they will not be repairing that until 2026. And the GeoPark was looking to us, because they also want to partner up with, I think it's Parks Canada, and they had reserved some funding through the, I don't have my notes, through the license plate, the fancy ones. They had secured some funding from then, but it's really disappointing to hear now that nothing will be done until 2026 for the platform. Yes, there are other accesses, but not everybody can access those. So they were looking to see if there was something we would be able to do, but I guess not now. I don't know, unless we can change something.
Yeah, it's called Advocate. Minister meetings, minister letters, you know, that's our job is to advocate for that. That is a provincial park, that's probably a provincial mandate to make sure they're accessible by all. They're the ones that actually mandated the municipalities to come out with an accessibility program and stuff. So that's why we have staff sitting on one through Fort St. John, and staff has also started up their own internally. So I think this is an opportunity, even at a council's business, is put a motion on the floor that we send a letter to the ministry stating that, but also state about how you've mandated the accessibility program through all municipalities and regional districts. And yet, you're not accessible out of your camp. That's what I would do.
Thank you for that, Mayor. Yes, so let's advocate, advocate, advocate.
When I put a motion on the floor, we can direct staff to send a letter to the ministry. And I, and I'll be honest, when we do it, I think, again, we add Minister of State. She is all about rules, so we'll see. Oh, sorry, I thought you left it on.
I would like to put a motion on the floor to direct staff to write a letter to Parks Canada and, oh, no, to Parks BC, sorry, Parks BC, in regards to Canusa's Falls, the closing. We would like to see that changed. And we would also like to CC the minister.
Of state.
Of state. And.
That's good.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Secondary, Counselor Nuxana. Staff will clean that up. We'll get it off to the ministry in charge of that. And I think we can, we can probably, I think staff will capture it. But they'll CC our regional partners as well. But I was, 100% what we can do is advocate for them and push that they expect us to do this accessibility, which we should be. Everybody should be able to access our walk paths in our areas, but also the provincial parks should be accessible, especially the lookout. It's very important for tourism. So, I mean, be honest with you, I'm going to make an amendment, that we also address or send that letter to the Ministry of Tourism. Take a second on the amendment. Counselor Dusso? Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Thanks, Counsel, Counsel Julik, on the amendment? Okay, can I call the question on the amendment? All in favor? Okay, any discussion on the amended motion? Counselor Julik?
Mostly, I just wanted to say they're actually closing off the whole platform. They did have a portion of the platform blocked off, and somebody kicked that down over the winter. So I believe that that is why the next process is being to completely shut it off, because it's not safe. And if you think about it, it's been up there for about 30 years. I don't know why the 2026 year, but that's what they were talking last year when they put up the fence. And I would agree, it's definitely not accessible. I guess I would just, when you talked about staff cleaning up the motion, I just want to make sure that the letter comes from Mayor and council, because that's what's on behalf of Mayor of Council, and that's not what the, the, the motion didn't say that. Staff to write a letter. So I just, I'm.
Yeah, if you look at the letters, they're saying it's from Mayor and council, or even the last one to the ministry. Doesn't come.
Just, just so that it's clear in the motion and in the minutes. Okay.
Counselor Norbury?
Thank you, Mary Kekalka. I think it's important just to highlight the, the safety concerns. I mean, I recognize that they're gonna, they're gonna attempt to, beep's still distracting. They're gonna attempt to block it off, but realistically, someone's driving three hours to get out there, at 45 minutes to an hour on a gravel road, they're gonna try and get on that platform. And they already have, right? Like, it's already been shown. So I think, yeah, we talked about accessibility. It is a feature in our community, and the safety. We got to be realistic. People are getting on there. And they need to take care of that. Thanks.
Thanks. Counselor Julik? Oh, just hit back.
Yeah, I think it's important we get these letters out to the ministry, and that's why I said Ministry of Tourism, Minister of State, and then obviously Minister with Parks BC, and then obviously the regional site. I think it's very, very important. They've probably pushed it off to 2026, probably to do the second, I read your report. It talks about them coming back out and, and doing a second evaluation of it. I'm guessing from that, they're probably looking to see if there's any, they've probably gotten probably some pictures from the previous look at it. And they're probably seeing if there's any other deterioration of the, of the, of it, to make sure that when they repair it, that they're doing it for, you know, long lasting, I guess, to make sure that they don't have formation that's moving, and it's going to move into the river. But I think there is something that, to me, that, you know, we hammer ministries and spend a lot of time in ministry meetings that, you know, this is a time for them. They always ask what they can do for us. Well, that's, I mean, there's no reason why they can't send somebody up and have it done fairly quick on, in regards to having it reassessed. And maybe there's a way that, yes, that side's still going to be blocked off. There's a better way of blocking off to keep the other side open. Because to me, if we, if they block it off, and there's people that are still using it, and they keep using it, it makes me wonder what the next step would be for BC Parks. It might be shut that road down. So that could be a huge concern. So I think we need to get ahead of this. So I think it's really important staff to send that out. And then obviously, our MNOA will be CC'd on that. I think I'll reach out to them too, to give them a heads up. Because I think that's the bad thing is if, Counselor Julik, what you mentioned there, they had it sectioned off, somebody obviously pushed that over and went into it anyways throughout the winter here. If that continues, do they shut down that whole park at a certain, you know, I believe, I'm not saying there's a gate there, but I, you know, okay. I drove it out there, I never noticed it when I went out there. I haven't been out there lots, because I go up by the, by a riverboat. But that's what's going to be next, is now we lose that, we lose that tourism and people traveling out there. So I think it's really, really important for Tumbler Ridge to push on this. So totally support it. Counselor Julik and then Counselor Dusso?
I just wonder if, before we do the letter, if we reach out to the local BC parks and get the full information. So we're sending the letter out, I feel, without having all of the information about why it's, it's waiting till 2026. I'm not saying that we shouldn't. I'm just saying that when we send letters to ministry, does that make it look like we're actually trying to cooperate with our local people? Have we discussed it with them? Have we asked them, like, what does that look like for you? And maybe there's some plans there that we aren't aware of. You know what I mean? Like, so I just wonder if before we do the letter writing, and then somebody's hands get slapped, or then we've escalated it before, maybe it needs escalating, is all I'm wondering.
It sounds like it needs to be escalating, if it's been down since the winter time. And they revalued, they looked at it last year and closed it off. I'm sorry, the regional has all the opportunity to reach out to the district of Tumbler Ridge as well. If we're regional partnerships with ministry and obviously their staff, I don't think it hurts for them to reach out and advise the district. Or some of our agency partnerships, GeoPark, Vic Center, WMMS, all of, like, those groups obviously haven't been fully updated by the regional. So I don't think it's wrong. I mean, it's up to council, but I don't think it's wrong to get these letters out. I would suggest sending a letter to the regional office as well. I don't think it hurts to be ahead of the game.
I just, it's not that I disagree that the letters should go out. I'm just saying that I think we're making a decision without having all the information. And I would not want to be on the receiving end of that if somebody wrote a letter criticizing us or something without having all the information. But that's just my opinion.
I guess I'm taking in the comments from council. Two councils, one just mentioned that it's, that's being fully closed. One's mentioned that it was evaluated, partly, but it's cut off, and they're not doing it till 2026. So I think that's exactly what we're sending out there is why. But I'm, I'm just saying that council meant the comment that it's being fully closed off. That's what I'm going with. Like, that's what was said.
That's my understanding.
Okay. Counselor Dusso?
Thank you. I do have a few answers to that. And what work is BC Parks doing? I just got this email today. Basically, the park is currently developing a new design for the viewing platform, which will be constructed using fire resilient materials in place of the existing wood structure. In addition, the platform rebuild, the project will include significant upgrades to the parking lot, the access trail, with a strong focus on improving accessibility for all visitors. There'll be new interpretive signage, and then that's where they say the park will open in 2026. I can forward this, this letter that I've received on to council for more information.
Forward on to staff.
And actually, the CAO forwarded this to me. So, yeah, she could, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nuxana?
Thank you. It sounds like we need to encourage this to happen faster then, that they do have a plan, and their plan is to reopen it, but, or have an interim solution that still allows visitors to come into our community, or who are coming into our community to view Canusa Falls from a temporary platform of some sort.
Yeah, and I think that's important to have the letters. I understand from Counsel Julik's side, but I think it's important to get these out there so that if regional has not updated ministry, or ministry's not fully in the loop, that they can loop the DTR in, so we know what's up. Because it could make a big difference in regards to our tourism, in regards to visitor center, and how they send people out and when people are asking things. I think it's very, very important to have that information. And I don't think it's wrong to send the, the letters out.
Okay, any more discussion? Going to call the question, all in favor? Opposed? Counselor Julik's opposed, motion carries. Any other council business for the floor? Counselor Julik?
I just wanted to give a big thank you to Counselor Dusso. She's been doing all the heavy lifting of my liaisons, as I've not been able to attend, and she's doing another one. So just wanted to give her a thank you publicly for picking up my slack.
Okay. Anything else from council?
I have a couple of things. Ms. Scott and myself did meet with the school in regards to establishing that with the youth there and the engagement, and seeing if they would be involved and how that would look. The school has emailed back now since Easter break's been over. And I know staff is working on having that second meeting, myself and Ms. Scott. We're just waiting to confirm the date and go from there. Just going to meet with the, not sure exactly if it's just going to be the group, or if they found some other students that want to partake in regards to leading it. So, well, no more. I believe we're trying to set the meeting up for May 7th, and then we'll probably bring back that information. I had an opportunity today to meet the new sergeant. He was in town doing his overview of his house. doing his, um, overview of his house, so his first, uh, walk up or walk in. Um, he'll be starting, he should be in town with his wife, uh, early part of June. Um, he comes out of Midtown, uh, worked in Surrey for 14 years on gang unit and a, uh, kind of another unit, surveillance unit. Um, he's very excited about coming to Tumbler Ridge. Uh, his wife's an avid hiker. Um, he's an avid fisherman and hunter, so they are very, very excited to be coming to Tumbler Ridge. So, um, once they get settled here in June, I imagine we'll come to meeting council. Um, really nice young man, so I, I think they'll be a great add to Tumbler Ridge, so. And that's all I have. Um, thanks, Counselor Norbury, for your reports. I know there's other reports that have been mailed, and make the next agenda. Um, Ms. Scott, any emailed in questions?
No.
Thank you. Take a, uh, take the resolution recommendation for closed place, Counselor Nuxana?
That the April 22nd, 2025 regular council meeting be closed to the public according to Section 90C, E, and J of the Community Charter to permit discussions about labor, sorry, C, labor relations and/or other employee relations, and E, the acquisition disposition or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interest of the municipality, and J, information that is prohibited or information that if it were presented in a document would be prohibited from disclosure under Section 21 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act.
Secondary, Counselor Norbury, all in favor? Carry, five minute recess.